We have a copy of that? Okay. Welcome, everyone. We're back in person. Thank goodness. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is the 15th of June, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome back to the Southampton Town Hall. Nice to see everybody in person. We are still recommending, you know, frequent hand washing. There's also a case tracing that's required for this building still, so if you would be kind enough to make sure that you sign a sheet when you come in, just so that we can keep track in case unfortunately there's a outbreak of some kind, we'd be able to know who came into the building. Before we start, I'm wondering if anybody from the Select Board would like to say anything in particular? Any announcements? Any words of gratitude, gems of wisdom, as I say?
No real announcements, but just to say that I think we're pleased with the turnout on a postponed day for the town meeting. It turned out to be about 160 or so people, I guess, in a pretty hot sunny day, as you can tell from many of us who attended. We got a little bit fried, but I think it was a good crowd and, you know, pretty good discussion, and we got through it all. So, thanks, everybody, for organizing and putting it together, and for everybody who was able to attend. Much appreciate your interest and participation.
Great. In particular, I want to extend thank you to the following people who were instrumental in planning the annual town meeting: Timmy Malounis, Jerry Swanson, Robert Floyd, Carl Kerner, Lucy Dalton, Chief Ian Illingsworth, Chief John Workman, Don Snyder, Randall Kemp, Ed Gibson, and of course, the folks from East Hampton Media, who actually taped or recorded it. So, thank you all very much. I thought it was a great day. Robert, appreciate all you do, as usual. So, with that, we're just going to jump right in because we do have East Street Bridge a sealed bid to open, and that was posted for 6 o'clock, so I'll let Ed do the honors then.
All right. We did receive seven sealed bids by 2:00 p.m. this afternoon, which was the bid deadline, so I will open them up. The first one's from New England Infrastructure, Inc.
It's literally a bid opening.
Yes, it is. And it is for $2,292,872. The next one is from MAS Building and Bridge, Inc. And the amount is $2,182,319. What's up?
Are you looking for that number again?
Yes, I am. Got it. Next one is from Tully Construction Corp.
Could you repeat the name again? Is it Tony or Ton?
Tully, T-U-L-L-Y, Construction Corporation. And the amount is $2,186,546. Next one is from MIG Corporation. And the amount is $2,037,426. Next one's from ET and L Corporation. The amount is $2,261,837. Next is S and R Corporation. The amount is $2,843,014. And the last one's from Northern Construction Service, LLC. And the amount is $2,424,428. So, these will have to be evaluated by VHB, but the apparent low bidder at this point in time would be MIG Corporation at $2,37,426. So, we will send these along to VHB to be evaluated.
Okay. So, this funding is basically a million dollars from the grant.
Million dollars from Mass Works.
1.5.
And 1.6 million dollars from a voter-approved debt exclusion vote.
Okay. And the timeframe, if you could just remind me, that was given, I think it was extended because of the scarcity of supplies, particularly steel. That was extended till May of next year, is that right?
Mass Works or?
No, no, the.
The deadline for completion is.
Deadline for the completion of the project.
Has been extended to May of 2022. And I will copy these over, and I will pass them down for your signatures to witness the bids.
Randall, is this company done working town meeting? That you're aware of? What about the, the bridge on Valley looks pretty new, no?
Bridge on Valley.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we do a motion to approve it? Do we wait for VHB to?
Wait for VHB to evaluate them.
Okay. Any questions from Chris or Francine? No. Okay. While we're doing that, we'll just move on then, if that's okay? We don't have any public hearings, but we do have a couple appointments and resignations. The first is Michael Reed. By the way, I just want to say thank you, the, we have new equipment here. New mics and, yeah, cameras, action. That's great. This was all done last week, right?
Yep. The first two weeks of June, we installed.
Installed it.
Just kind of getting used to it. So far, so good.
Yeah, so far, so good. I'm not getting any texts about anything, so it's always a good sign. Thank you very much. All right. Michael Reed, Resignation Conservation Commission. It says not a resignation.
It's not, it's really not a resignation. He does not wish to be reappointed, but I felt it was pertinent to put this on here because it leads to the opening that Megan will be.
Okay, I get it. Yes.
Mike's term ends at the end of June, actually, so.
6:30, so yes.
So, basically just.
So, Megan's, if it's approved, would start on July 1st.
Reappointed.
Okay. And we'll take the two of them together, and I guess the other one is the appointment of Megan Kuzinski, Conservation Commission, term to expire 6/30/2024. Can I have a motion to approve all of those? So, move.
I'll second it.
All right. Francine and then Chris.
Could we have Megan maybe give a few words?
Hi, Megan. Great. And thank you for submitting the volunteer form, and thank you, Mrs. Hahn.
Hi. Good afternoon, evening, I guess now. Megan Kuzinski of 90 East Street. Let's see.
Just a little about your background, to your.
Yeah. I moved to Southampton in 2016, but I graduated from Hampshire Regional. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science from Westfield State. I spent two years interning with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission in Forestry and Engineering, and have since been working in environmental consulting, mostly in the remediation and waysite cleanup aspect, so.
That's wonderful. That's great.
Thanks. It's a dirty job.
We've got to be sure Randall doesn't steal you, though, for the Highway Department. I don't know.
No, no, no. It's a great committee. I'm just, when I did the liaison into the Conservation Commission, I just learned a tremendous amount, and I also realized what a very hard-working committee they are.
They really are.
It is remarkable, and I'm so impressed with the knowledge of the folks on the committee. I mean, it's.
And Megan's gotten her, her feet wet a little bit. She's been attending some Zoom meetings, just to get a sense of what goes on, so she's already got a little bit of orientation to, to the CONCOM, which is great. So, thank you for stepping up and volunteering.
Yep, thank you.
Absolutely. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
No.
All in favor?
Tishman, I.
Fals, I.
And Groden, I. Thank you very much.
Next, we do have a reappointment of interim town accountant, a term to expire. This does carry it, I think, the additional 12 weeks, which is September 14, 2021. We continue to search for an accountant. We had, unfortunately, you know, a couple people that we had interviewed and so forth, and have not yet selected a candidate for this position. So, in order to keep the books attended to, we have to, you know, continue to have Regina, which we're happy to have. So, could I have a motion then to extend Regina Gillis's interim town accountant position?
I'll move to extend her, her, or the, I guess, the contract with the personnel firm that she comes from, right, to allow Regina to continue working until September 14, 2021.
I'll second that. Any comments? Questions? Okay, all in favor? And by the way, Ed, if, that could be shorter, if we end up having a.
Well, yes, it may.
Okay. All in favor?
Fals, I.
Tishman, I.
And Groden, I. Okay. Next, we have Select Board reports. Who would like to start?
I'll go ahead. The Finance Committee had its regular meeting last night on June 14, 2021. They reviewed and approved eight cents of meeting minutes that were put on hold as they worked through the budget, so they've been working on that budget quite a long time. And I commend them on the details of their minutes, and I encourage anyone who's interested in this whole budget process and the information, in the exchange of information between the Finance Committee and the departments, as well as their final decision, to go online, download the minutes, and take a look. They're quite detailed and very informative. So, congratulations on, to them on that. They reviewed the six, the June 10 expense report, and they did a thorough review of the account balances, which we'll be doing a little bit later here on our agenda. They approved two year-end budget transfers in the amount of $44,612.68 and $5,117.49, respectively. And then they finalized the revisions to the new draft Finance Committee bylaw, which will be brought before the Select Board in the next month, after the Bylaws Committee has completed its final reading of the document. Their next regular meeting is scheduled for July 12, 2021. So, that's it on finance. The Personnel Policies and Procedures Board is scheduled to meet next Thursday, June 24, that's 6:00 p.m. And I imagine we'll be meeting in person, for the first time since I've been on it, anyway. And then finally, the Bylaws Committee will meet once we're short of having a quorum available. Right now, we're down a person, and hopefully we'll resume our work in the very near future. That's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. For me, the Board of Assessors met last week, basically routine business, nothing out of the ordinary. CONCOM, Conservation Commission, also met last week and spent time reviewing Megan's candidacy, but then also looked at the proposed winner, I guess, of the bid for the work on the Manhan Sanctuary Trails. Kane's Mechanical looks to be the, the winning bid, and I guess they are approving that. They voted to accept that contractor, and I think we're just going to, just the next step will be to get a contract, I guess, written up with, with them, so that they can start work. The Grant Committee met last week. We've got one proposal in the works with the Parks Commission to do possibly a walking path around Conant Park, to kind of approve the accessibility of Conant Park for both the elderly, as well as moms with kids in strollers, but to make it an ADA accessible pathway around the park, and possibly also putting in a splash pad. That is the idea, anyway. The grant deadline for that is July 14, and so I will be attending the Parks Commission meeting tomorrow night to go over that information a little bit more in detail with them, to see what they really want to do on that. But hopefully, we can pull something together for them, with them. The, at some point, we need a meeting, again, of the Old Town Hall informal working group. We got a report back from the consultants at one point in time about the idea of improving the drainage around the side of Town Hall. So, and I know Christina Madsen and Andrea Madsen, her sister Andrea, blanking her last name now, was a Madsen, have looked at this in more detail, and so I think it would be good, we can schedule a meeting on that, maybe in the coming week, and just sort of see where we need to go with that, if we're going to do any work on it this year or not. And then, lastly, I think the Tech, the AdTech Committee met last week and have some very good ideas. I think they're hoping to maybe join in on the next department head meeting. They wanted to get a better sense from the users who have received their new laptops, how things are going, and what kinds of things are still giving them a little bit of a headache. So, they wanted to have more of a in-person knowledge of even just what Town Hall is all about and so forth, in terms of the, the computer system that's here. So, I think that will happen in the coming week. Other than that, I think that's all I have for Select Board reports.
Okay. There are three. Council on Aging met last week, and a lot of it was about the budget and the upcoming town meeting, and the reopening of the Town Hall, and also about programming, but I wanted to let everybody know that on Monday, there was a volunteer appreciation lunch, attended by Senator Ellis and also Representative Lindsay Sabadosa and Francine Tishman. And also Janet Kane were recognized. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but they were recognized for being Volunteers of the Year for the Senior Center and the Friends. So, thank you very much. The Board of Health met last week also, and they discussed COVID and this current status and immunizations and reopening of Town Hall. They discussed some recommendations relative to the Senior Center. It was the last meeting of Rebecca Dubay, who's term expiring. And was there anything else? You were there, was there anything else from the meeting that I should mention?
Not that I can recall.
Okay.
I think you covered it all.
And then Open Space met, actually, at the exact same time, so I wasn't able to attend their meeting, but they only had a half an hour meeting because right after that was a program by Scott Jackson, and it was on climate change. So, I jumped onto that for a bit, but the Open Space meeting was short. So, that's all I have. Anybody have any questions? Okay. All right. Ed, do you want to do your Town Ministry report?
Sure. Let's see. This upcoming Saturday, June 19, will be Juneteenth. Although this holiday, for the first time, is now officially a Massachusetts holiday, it has not yet been adopted into the PPBB manual as an official town holiday. The PPB has taken this up and will be recommending that the town adopt it as an official town holiday for our employees in the next round of revisions of their rules and regulations. To become official, the PPB will have to hold a public hearing, take into account the comments from the public hearing, and then send the recommendation or recommendations on to the Select Board for their consideration and vote. I would also note that at this time, none of our collective bargaining agreements have Juneteenth in them as a recognized official holiday, although all three of the collective bargaining agreements, which are under the negotiations of the Select Board, are due to expire on June 30, 2021, and we were in the process of entering into negotiations for successor agreements for those three union agreements. Bids for the pickleball courts are due back tomorrow afternoon, and will be opened at the Park Commission meeting tomorrow evening at the Conant Park Pavilion. I also would like to thank our annual town meeting planning team for the wonderful job they did, both planning for the outside annual town meeting and for all their help in setting up the chairs, tables, and equipment, marking the field and parking lot. The members of the team were Tammy Malounis, Jerry Swanson, our health director, Robert Floyd, town moderator, Carl Keener, assistant moderator, Lucy Dalton, town clerk, Chief Ian Illingsworth, police chief, Chief John Workman, fire chief, Don Snyder, emergency management director, and Randall Kemp, highway superintendent. I would also like to thank Todd J. Rozz and David Siz from the Highway Department for all their help in setting up and taking down. Let's see. Then we did have another issue in Town Hall on Monday with three desktop, desktop computers after a power outage or power spike that would not reconnect to the network. These computers had to be reset to the server, and then on the same day, to keep me even busier, is our highway superintendent came back from vacation and found that his administrative assistance computer, who was just starting her new job that day, had fried sometime over his vacation, so. It, it could. Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah. It, it could be. You don't know, but.
Do these have UPSs with them, or?
Yeah.
They do?
They did.
All UPS was, shall we say, an advanced age.
But it wasn't, it, when they, their battery power runs out or whatever, they beep, so, or if they're dying, they beep, so. It wasn't beeping, so. I mean, fortunately, for, there are a couple of newer PCs here for our department heads. Randall's was one of them, the one that, his new laptop that we were able to obtain through the CARES Act. I think the one that you had was only like six or seven months old. So, the plan was to, for all of them, was to keep them, make sure all the data did get, you know, carried over to the new laptops, that nothing was missing, so we're going to hold on to them for. So we're going to hold on to them for a period of time. Anyway, with Randall's, because it's seven months old, the plan was anyway, the administrative assistance desktop was in need, it was a Windows 7, it was over five years old, it needed to be replaced. That was going to end up moving to the administrative assistance position anyway. So that's what we ended up. One of our better contractors was able to do that for us on Monday. So that worked out all right. And then to lead into that, just to let you know, the next round of laptop deployments is scheduled for Wednesday, June 23rd. And then upcoming select board meetings, June 29th, and then July meetings to be determined.
Okay. So is this, this, the laptop deployments on the 23rd, is that the end of it or is that just?
No, no, we'll probably get three or four done on that day. I was looking for two days in a row to get this, they only had one day left in June and rather to then wait into, later into July. I grabbed the one day and we'll do three or four more of them and that'll leave like another, hopefully, they'll get four done on the 23rd and that'll leave four more to be done.
And that'll be it then?
And that'll be it.
Okay.
Ed, just a question on the, on the Juneteenth. Why, if this is a state holiday now, why does it have to have a public hearing? That seems like a, an extra expense for, what purpose really? I mean, if it's already been declared a town, a state holiday.
It is not listed in our rules and regulations as a holiday, which is, flows from a bylaw.
Right.
So it means it has to be adopted by the town.
Okay. Yeah, we're in the, the PPB is in the process of reviewing and revising its manual and that was one of the changes, but probably no one realized that despite the fact that it was a state holiday, that it was still this other step for town employees to be eligible for June 19th.
Correct. And then, and for the most part, by state law, Saturday holiday falls on a Saturday, a Sunday holiday gets moved to the Monday. This year, it's on a Saturday. So for other than most, mostly union employees like police or highway, and it's not in their contract, so it's not covered, but most of our town employees would have the Saturday off anyway. But if it, the PPB had not already earmarked it as a recommendation in the next revisions, my advice to the select board would be to, you know, ask the PPB to take a look at it and give the select board a, you know, if they are going to recommend it, to bring it forward in the next year so it's done before Juneteenth of 2022.
Sounds like they're already looking at it. Sounds like they're already looking at it.
Well, yeah, it's already been, you know, penciled into the draft.
Okay. Okay. Robert. Oh, yeah, Robert, one assist.
I'm Chair Robert Floyd, 166 College Highway. Next on the agenda is presentations. Erica Flood and Jen Ramsey are here from East Hampton Media, and I don't see them on the agenda and they're scheduled to speak tonight. Might they be allowed to speak now on their presentations?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah. Because I think, I think we also talked about, we were going to add to the agenda the nomination of board members. We have three board member nominations, but we don't have the paperwork in front of us. Were you going to provide that to us?
We were signed to speak tonight.
Yeah.
We're just here to observe the new equipment.
Do you want to just go up and just, you know, because we talked a lot about the equipment, do you want to just say a couple of words about how it all went and what we're enjoying now so that people can hear?
And it's totally my fault because as we went through this and we were doing the agenda and I had originally set it for the Zoom and then the emergency order ended and it didn't get through the legislature as quick as possible as I scrambled to change things over to in-person, I did not copy that over to the agenda.
And we still want to maybe the next meeting.
So I have asked Erica Anne if she's available on the 29th to come to the next meeting and she is, but I have profusely apologized.
We'll also get some paperwork so that we can address the nominations for the, is that still something that?
That has, that has been sent.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, you have a figure.
Yes.
Then this way you don't have to talk to her. Do the paperwork, I guess.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Would you like?
Yes.
Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media. I'm just here to let you know that we did install the much awaited equipment in this room, new microphones, cameras, the whole live TV setup. It's being controlled by Tim Riley at our station right now. We also have a.
No projector?
A new projector, which you can connect to either with a dongle or an app or an HDMI cable. So I will do a training on that when it needs to be used. But yeah, it went really well. We still have the hybrid thing to figure out. So I was told that we're not doing hybrid meetings yet, which is combining in-person with Zoom.
Right.
We're waiting on a piece of equipment to ship. So that's the only thing we don't have done. But yeah, tonight's our first night using it. We're still kind of figuring it out, but I'm happy to show anyone how the projector works or how to turn everything on, but generally, it seems to be running just fine.
So three, three new cameras, one, two, six new microphones.
Yeah, and so the mics have a mute button. It's, it doesn't, you have to hold it down to mute. So it's like basically for if you have to cough or sneeze, but otherwise, they're active when it's green.
Is that the gray, the gray button?
Yep, you can hit them, hold the mute button down, it turns red and you know you're not on.
Oh, great.
But the monitor there is for your live TV feed. So that's exactly what the subscribers at home are seeing. And yeah, we're monitoring the live meetings from our studio.
And would you like to let the select board know of the equipment that's, that specifically is still on backwater that will be delivered and installed in the future?
Yeah, so we have, I am going to get another mat to hide the cables back there. And we have a, what's called a smart TV. It's just a big monitor that we would connect with Zoom and it would be connected to the system so we can do a hybrid meeting if needed.
Yeah, that's great. We're waiting to find out about what's allowed.
Yeah, I'm glad it's delayed a little bit because.
Right. Equipment's delayed.
We just need time to figure that out, but yeah, I hope it works out really well.
Well, that's great. Like I said, no tech saying they can't hear anything. Good. No news is good news.
And you did say that these meetings cannot be streamed?
Yeah, so we can actually stream to YouTube. We didn't do it tonight because we haven't talked about it, but if you would like us to stream Select Board on YouTube live, we can do that. So if you'd like, we can start at the next meeting.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
Because I don't have access to a TV, but I have access to, you know, streaming.
Yeah, not everybody's a cable TV subscriber, but everybody needs access to the meeting. So we can do that next Select Board.
Okay, great.
And while there's a lot of boards and committees that aren't happy that there's a delay in getting Zoom extension approved through Boston, it did force us to trial under fire for the new PEG equipment for this evening because we weren't originally planning to have this particular meeting in-person, but everything seems to be working. So that's great.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Erica, too.
Yeah.
And thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to old business then. Accountant position, have we got additional applications?
We do not have any additional applications for the accountant position. We are pursuing some other avenues also. There are some CPA firms and there are also some planning agencies which actually supply town accountant services to communities. So we are also looking at that. The other thing I have to look at is because both of these, shall we say, advertisements, at least on Indeed, are getting older of how I go about refreshing those, so they come up to the top of the list.
Yeah, and I think that if things don't, you know, come through with some of these contracts, auditing and/or planning agencies, we should probably reconvene and put our heads back together. I mean, we've had a few people that we've interviewed, but it hasn't looked anything and I certainly don't want you to continue to.
Yeah, I was, I was very, you know, I made a couple of phone calls in this one firm, Kinsheriff, and they're in the eastern part of the state, but they provide accounting services to like 30 to 40 municipalities here in Massachusetts.
Many of them right in Western Mass.
Yeah, and they do it remotely if you have, you know, an assistant accountant that, you know, feeds them the data. They can work remotely. And so, I mean, I didn't go as far as calling any of the towns to, you know, get their feedback on how satisfied they are with the services, but yeah, I'm glad to know that there was something out there.
Right.
And they offer a bunch of different services. If we should hire an accountant that, let's say, doesn't have as much municipal experience as we might need, they will actually job coach the person.
That's great.
So, and then he mentioned.
Do you have any towns here in Western Mass that they're working?
Yeah. I mentioned the last time, I know it's Chester and.
It's not West Ham.
They do Hampshire region.
Do you remember that school?
Oh, really? Yes. So, and several towns in the area. And then there was another firm that they gave me that does Hatfield and Hadley. So, I mean, it's nice to know that we have options if we continue to have difficulty finding an individual.
I think we definitely need to reconvene a subcommittee meeting if.
Yes.
It doesn't pan out on this right after we get past the end of the fiscal year, okay? How about the assistant accountant position?
We do have one applicant for that and Francine's setting up an interview for next, next week.
Monday?
I'll have to look at my schedule. I have not had a chance to look today.
All right. As soon as I hear from you, I already spoke to her once and told her I'd be back in touch to finalize the date, so.
Okay. All right. Keep us posted, we'll keep these in the agenda. Next is the Route 10 Bridge, the water main, so progress is being made?
Yes, they're moving back and forth fairly quickly from what I've seen out there. I'll have to, I will talk with Tom Gone, the Water Superintendent, and find out how things are moving, moving along, but they seem to me, once they started with, you know, a little bit of delay for availability of supplies, they seem to be moving along fairly, fairly well.
Randall, is this pretty much an everyday, you know, I mean, I've been down there while they're obviously directing traffic on one side of the road, but is it pretty much Monday through Friday until it's done?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
They run out there every day, I see. I'm close with.
Right, that's right. Yep. Okay, well, that's good to see that movement. It's good to have the bid opened on the other bridge. I've been saying right along, I hope they finish one before they start the other. My only route into town. All right, E Street Bridge, anything else besides the bid?
No, that will be the, be the highlight of the update.
All right. And the good news is we do have the okay to carry over the Monday. So that's good.
Yes, as far as the mask works go, yes.
Okay. COVID, we had a short meeting this morning. I guess we agreed it will be our last one. We've been meeting through this pandemic every two weeks. Police, fire, Ed, myself, Board of Health, the MD. Not everyone was on the call today, but at least the chiefs and Ed and I were. And things are opening up. We discussed the reopening of the Town Hall. Our numbers are low, our vaccination rates are high in the state. So this pandemic is by no means over. Just encourage people to continue to wash your hands and to exercise good infection prevention. But other than that, it seems like everybody's in good shape. The departments are well-staffed and healthy and cleaning's in place and everything's fine. Our rates are low.
Yes, you know, we, we will make sure to follow, still do the contract tracing here in Town Hall. The masks are not required, however, they are welcome. We will continue our cleaning schedule as we have for the past 15 months. There are, we still have plenty of PPE supplies for anyone that, so depletes their mask supply in their offices. We still have plenty of hand sanitizer. We are leaving the plexiglass barriers up and I think we will probably for a good amount of time because I think, you know, besides having advantages of protecting everyone from the spread of COVID-19, I think there's some, shall we say, practicality of also helping with the spread of whether it's the common cold or flu also, so.
Yep. I just want to thank everyone, all the employees, all the department heads. I mean, this has been a very difficult year all around and not one person has been, has not been affected by this from a work standpoint. And I think, just want to say thank you to everybody who has stepped up to do extra and to do all they can to keep everybody safe. I think the town really came together and it's been challenging, but as usual, everybody rises to the occasion. Thank you. CARES Act.
And we still have some activity on, you know, CARES Act as far as items that have been ordered and haven't received yet. Randall's has ordered the generator for the, the Highway Department and just because of the, the lead time on that, it's supposed to be delivered and installed this summertime, but we have up to December 31st to spend that, those funds. Chris and I have worked together on putting together a list of comparison of approvals and expenditures by departments. In the next probably 10 days, I will have, compile that, see what we have for funding that may not be allocated and ask that, for that to be transferred and used for other purposes.
And I did send out today, we had done up just from our, our own allocations, how we had divided up things when the second phase of CARES came along. We had, you know, done up a spreadsheet pretty much for each department in terms of some of the equipment items that they were ordering that got approved by, by the state, et cetera. And I've been trying to keep track of invoices as they've been paid. And pretty much since July, with Regina and Ed's help, I've been able to compile, I think, just about everything from July to the end of May. And I sent out to each department today, their little particular spreadsheet. So library, fire, police, Randall got one, school, what else? The main ones, I guess, those are the big ones, Board of Health. And just to say, okay, here's what we had kind of allocated to you, here's what I see from the invoices has been spent, this is what I'm not seeing spent so far. And then, you know, we'll have to, you know, there may be some that I missed and I'm sure I did from the beginning. So phase one, before I got kind of involved in it, there were some invoices.
Right.
Put through and that was even maybe before we even really had a COVID account established. I think it was, things happened very quickly in that beginning time in April.
Right, right.
April, May. And so there's some entries that probably have to, you know, be changed over and reversed back and charged to the right account here. But we've got a general sense, but there's, there's still, you know, by my figures, probably a couple hundred thousand that we've got to.
Really?
Play around with and reprogram somewhere.
Really? And is that because things fell off the wish list or is this because, no, did we figure in the FEMA that went from 75% reimbursement to?
I haven't touched any of that. That's part of it. We've got to figure that, yeah. I have not touched any of that. It was more just the core expenses, but for things like, you know, we had a couple of places where there were personnel that were anticipated and asked for.
Right, right.
It never, never happened.
Right.
There was a public health nurse, for example. There was an admin assistant in fire. There was thousands of dollars of PPE in that first phase.
Right, right.
And that was when there was difficulty finding PPE. So a lot of that. I mean, you're talking $10,000 of.
Right.
Masks. That's a lot.
And then we got a later.
Stayed by.
Right, and stuff got printed. So, so some of those things didn't end up getting used fully.
You got a really big shipment laid on.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Exactly. So everybody, you know, managed to, you know, use their sources and get what they needed and get us going, but a lot of the anticipated expenses, I think, early on did not happen then. And so, yeah, so we've got a few, but this at least hopefully allows every department to take a look at what I think they have allocated or what they've, you know, accounted for in terms of what they've spent, what they've bought. And if there's issues, then, you know, they can get together with that and we can figure that out. But we'll have to probably spend some time and reprogram some things to the extent we can. We do have the authority to reprogram some things for another month or so.
Is that an open thing up until?
June 30th.
I think it's June 30th.
That's coming up really quickly.
Yeah, so that's why they need to, you know, take a look at that and see, okay, is there something else that?
You should get your sink.
I'll fix your, you back some.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we're pretty much, I didn't have the exact figure on your generator, but I just earmarked that amount pretty much. just earmarked that amount pretty much that was in the budget anyway, the $9,000 or something that was there.
Oh, come on. Oh, my gosh.
Wow.
What do you mean, $9,000? $9,000 for what?
The generator?
That's all?
They've sent a real, yeah.
Yeah.
But that doesn't include the liquid propane tank and the plumbing too.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, then maybe some-
The tank and getting the plumbing.
And we had two things come together to make some things even scarcer and long-term to get, as one was COVID and just the ability to get certain supplies to manufacture items from COVID. And then generators in particular, if you will remember what happened down in Texas, all the demand went way up in Texas for generators after that terrible ice storm and cold spells. So, that played into this also.
Yeah. Well, a generator for Norris is, you know, high on the list. I don't know if that, I think, I don't know. Anyway, we definitely don't want to leave any money on the table if possible. So, thank you very much, both of you, for all of that tallying. And hopefully, we'll be able to reprogram. Yeah, I hope so. I mean, and just to say too, some of the other ones that we, you know, had been worried about just trying to, you know, broaden our scope, I guess, of who could benefit from it. So, the Ag Commission, a couple of farms did put in invoices there. So, they spent almost, probably about two-thirds of what we had allocated for them. The community cupboard spent everything that we allocated for them.
What about the rental assistance?
It hasn't been drawn down on yet. We had $6,000 for that. I talked to Jim Seeny, and it's still there. It's the community action people, I believe, and these guys that are managing that thing. And there's another program that's kind of ahead of that that people seem to be drawing down on.
Oh, okay.
But they were relatively confident that that would be drawn upon. So, I'm thinking it will be. But hasn't been yet.
What about getting the word out on that?
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm not sure how that's all happening. And then there's some other stuff for the remote learning from the school that I don't think we've gotten all of their invoices on that too. So, I've let them know that as well.
So, it's great between grants and also technology, maybe that you're crossing a lot of important places for this sort of thing. Okay, well, thank you very much for all that. Any other questions about CARES Act? Okay, American Rescue Act update. I did attend the legislative forum that was done with Jim McGovern and Richie Neal to talk about the American Rescue Fund. They talked about a lot of other things. I guess there's a website set up, and towns can go ahead and submit for the funds.
And that's, one of the things that they made clear in the last week is that, yes, we did have to apply for those funds, and we have applied for our portion. And while they haven't said what the second phase will be as far as funding is, we are eligible for $645,910 in this first phase for this year.
And are we clear yet what can we use this?
As clear as mud. Basically, I mean, this is the list. Public health spending. This includes COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health, and certain public health and safety staff. Economic impacts of the public health emergency. These include efforts to mitigate economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, affected industries, and the public sector. Lost public sector revenue. Payments may be used to fund government services to the extent of revenue reductions from the pandemic. Further information on this eligible use can be found, and they have a link to it. Premium pay for essential workers. Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, as we've talked about before. Recipients may invest to improve access to clean drinking water, support wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure, and expand access to broadband internet. Wide range of eligible water and sewer infrastructure projects, specifically all that would otherwise be eligible to receive financial assistance through EPA's Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And broadband projects must provide service to unserved and underserved households and businesses. Eligible projects are expected to be designed to deliver upon project completion service that reliably meets or exceeds symmetrical upload and download speeds of 100 megabits. So, potential eligible uses within these five core areas. Direct COVID-related costs, testing, contact tracing, et cetera. Public health and safety staff. Hiring state and local government staff up to the number of employees to pre-pandemic levels. So, if you have, you know, let anyone go or, you know, laid them off, it's a way to be able to hire them back.
Or didn't provide raises?
Yeah, it's not in here, unfortunately. Assistance to unemployed workers, including job training, contributions to UI systems, small business assistance, nonprofit assistance, assistance to households, aid to impacted industries, expenses to improve efficacy of public health or economic relief programs, and survivors' benefits. C L R F, R F funding cannot be used to replenish a rainy day fund or other reserve fund or make a deposit to a pension fund.
Well, it seems logical that there be a similar structure in place to what happened before where we reach out to department heads and when will that money come in?
We're supposed to have it within 30 days of the state receiving it, so I would expect that we will have it in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. I hope that, you know, one of the things that we could explore further is the whole issue on the broadband. You know, I'm trying to figure out parts of town that are totally unserved by any kind of-
And there are areas that are not served.
At least try to do something there as a priority, maybe, I don't know.
And the school folks would probably be the good source for that.
Yeah, no, Kim Florrick is definitely already interested in that as, you know, being member of the tech committee. She definitely is a good resource for us, so, yep.
Okay. I do think, though, that starting with a similar group, if you're willing, the grants group, you and Root plus Ed, and just reaching out to department heads, making sure that they all have, I mean, I'm sure there are needs. I did speak to the charter representative today, and I'll mention that under correspondence, okay? I talked to him about all the complaints that were received. But let's move on. Annual town meeting review. We spoke about what a great day it was, how wonderful. Would you like to speak?
Harbor Floyd College Highway, it was awesome, considering that it was on a Sunday, and it was postponed from the day before. With who knows how many we would have had on Saturday. And I'm indebted to Carl Keener, the deputy moderator for the strategy, and behind-the-scenes talking, and philosophizing and counterbalancing my thoughts, and Ed and his team. It was high-position hockey. Everybody did what they had to do. We had 42 articles, 38 passed, two failed, and two were passed over, taking no action. And people really engaged, especially when it was so hot, and people kept wanting to continue. And the only thing that was missing was Randall. Would have gone on longer. Would have gone on longer. There are a few comments. I never had so many great testimonials at the meeting and after, and texts and emails. That was extraordinary. One or two individuals being emotional at their table. This isn't a group meeting. This is not a part of the select boards. In an outdoor setting, you know, things are more free. So, I certainly look forward to returning to Norris School. But any questions on anything on the meeting?
No, I thought it was a beautiful day, and I think that the town, I had met a new resident in town. I was just telling Chief Workman that today that I met a new resident in town, which said, I think I just, you know, won the jackpot by moving to Southampton. She was just so impressed by, you know, the two chiefs in town passing out waters to all the residents.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, I think that everything went really well. I'm glad it didn't go any longer because it was getting hot, but, you know, you had two tents set up and-
Extraordinary.
A couple people accessed the shade.
42 in three hours and 35 minutes.
Yeah. That's right. No, thank you very much for all you did too.
Yep, keeping it, keeping it moving for sure.
It was fun. I enjoyed it.
Thank you. Great, thanks. I think we covered about opening the town hall to the public and in-person meetings in town.
We were going to talk about this.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. We probably should, we can talk about it now, that's fine. So-
Were we, was it under here, or do you want to hold it off, Ed?
It was under the annual town meeting review.
Okay, all right. But then, so there's a handout that was put together, what to expect if the override fails, and it listed by department from general government to highway, Norris School, Police, Library, Fire, and Ambulance. And I think this was elicited from the department heads, and what more would you like to say?
Yes, this was, this was information that we got from the department heads that we put together and wanted to make certain that people understand what will happen if the override fails. And so, we have some specifics from each of the departments that you mentioned, and I guess the point is here, how do we get, how do we get it out to people? Is it something we can put on the town website? Is it something we can ask for Tammy to post on the town, on the community Facebook? And Robert, if he could put it into the newsletter? And how else can we get it into households is the question? I mean, you know, thinking that we could have handed it out on Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, but that would have hit a very limited number of people since there were only 161 there. So, I'm interested in what we might do here to get the information out to the households before Tuesday.
It's not worth doing any kind of a mailer, is it? Or?
Well, we talked about, you know, originally, and I guess I could share this, originally, Matt was going to mail this out on his own. And since he's not here tonight, you know, to discuss it, I'm very willing to help. However, we have to do it. If it means stuffing envelopes and putting stamps on them, labels, I'll be happy to do that. We just have to have, we just have to have access to the mailing labels and, you know, just get the work and put it, put it together.
Yeah, I think-
If everyone thinks, if everyone thinks it's advisable.
Well, I don't want anybody to think-
That's why I, that's why I brought it to you.
From you guys, but you can borrow my-
Yeah. Well, I think that if this information was, you know, it's-
Here's extra copies if you want.
I mean, if this information is factual information, I mean, we know we had a column called override. And if it's factual information that was generated from the budget document and contributed by department heads, then I don't see that as an issue. I don't want people to feel like they're being coerced one way or another. I mean, I just, it's, you know, we just want to make sure that they have the information that might help them make a decision.
Yeah. Certainly posting on the website and getting it out via the Facebook would be two things. I don't know, I don't know, yeah, your notion of getting something in the mail, I don't know how I feel about that. I guess I wonder whether that's a good idea or not. I mean, it might feel more-
I am not as-
More pressurized if I got something in the mail.
Not as sold on that idea. I just feel, I'm not as sold on that idea. I don't want people to feel like on behalf of the select board, we're endorsing, I mean, we want people to make their own decisions. We just want the information and-
Basically trying to get the information out and the implications so that people can, you know, make their decision.
I think we can leave handouts. I would want to put something compiled, but because I did get a postcard in the mail, and I had no idea where it came from. And about something that was on the town meeting, and I'd just like to know who, you know, where it came from. So, I think that having something about where the information was gathered from the source, it can certainly be copies of it in the senior center or, you know, other places where it might not be-
Library or something?
Yeah, where it might not be accessible.
The library is a good place.
Yep.
And maybe here, now the town hall is open, we can have it. If you're, if you're comfortable doing it that way.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with being on this Southampton Facebook page, and if Robert's willing to do it on the Southampton News and making it available to people, but I'm not sure about mailing it out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of mailing it out.
I have strong feelings about it in different directions, and I'd just as soon just make it available at sites in town and on the website perhaps.
Yeah, let me, let me check into a couple of things. First thing tomorrow morning-
Yeah, okay.
For you.
Yeah, I think that would be important.
Yeah, I would want some clearance on it.
Okay, but it's helpful. I mean, it's basically what ended up in the further column, so people should know that might not be aware.
I, yes, I read almost the exact same thing in today's newspaper.
Yeah, it was in the Gazette today as well, heard of it. In terms of, in terms of the town meeting.
On the Gazette.
Oh, yeah, right.
From the town meeting. The reporter did a nice job of summarizing-
Yeah.
-the issues.
Yes, right. Yeah, that's good. So, okay, then let's move on. Will you all look into this for us and?
Yes, I'll look into it first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, because we have the vote coming up. Actually, please make sure you vote. The election is next Tuesday, the 22nd.
Tuesday, the 22nd, from noon to 8:00 PM.
Yep.
Right here in the Council of Aging, which is attached to the town hall.
Okay. Next is the departmental transfers, and I did see it in here somewhere.
Opening town hall for the in-person meetings?
Oh, right.
Can we just clarify that?
Great, opening town hall to the public and in-person meetings. Anything else we want to say about that?
Do we think the legislature is going to change anything and let us have some Zoom meetings or not yet?
I think they will. The last I heard is we may hear something on Thursday, so we'll see what they come back with.
Okay.
I mean, I had, I think, I think it's great to have a representative like Lindsay Sabadosa because she reaches, reaches out to me at times that, you know, and probably more so than any state rep I've had in my district before. But it was interesting last week because I was trying to find out information on, you know, when it might go be taken up by the House and whatever. She was asking me some questions, and I said, okay, you asked, here's my perspective. Because you could tell they were trying to do something permanent. I said, here's my perspective from being in government right now. Do something on a temporary basis right now, and then take up the discussion on what can be permanent afterwards. You know, get this taken care of now. And she turned around and said, that's a very interesting perspective, that she'd take it back.
So, anybody that has meetings scheduled between now and Thursday should plan on meeting in person now. I mean, if there's meetings tomorrow, for example, I think-
I mean, basically, anybody that's got meetings coming up right now, I mean, especially in 48 hours, they should have them posted as in-person. I mean, into next week, they could probably wait maybe to Thursday, but I wouldn't wait any longer than, longer than that. And then, like I say, if nothing happens on Thursday, if you've got a Monday meeting scheduled, you should be posting it for in-person. But right now, everything in the future that if you're actually going to post it, it should be posted for in-person.
And has Lucy sent something out to the various committee chairs, do you know?
I know she sent out something to all the departments today, which was an update from KP Law, which basically said, covered those particular parameters at this point.
Okay.
And then meeting, so committees that are meeting, sometimes it's really hard to remember how we used to meet, frankly. Some of us used to meet downstairs, some of us used to meet upstairs for our various committee meetings.
Right.
So, we would still, we've still got the televised or the recording system upstairs to do, to record our meetings.
Right.
And then we'd have to do something similar here. We wouldn't be live, obviously, but we would record.
It would just have to let- It would just have to let East Hampton Media know and if they're, it's not going to be a live broadcast, then they would record the meeting through the system that's there.
But most of the, most of the recordings would still be upstairs, for the most part.
Depending on what the meetings are.
Yeah.
Like I say, they can be recorded down here also.
Okay, all right.
Is there new equipment upstairs?
No, there is not.
Okay.
But I think one of the things that we're going to see with return to in-person unless we get a reprieve to return to Zoom fairly quickly is these people are going to be fighting for rooms because of the demand.
You know, it's interesting, there's some committees where the membership is all new. They've never been together in person.
In person.
You didn't know where the second floor meeting room was.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's, it's pretty amazing.
It is amazing.
It's gone on for fifteen months.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Amazing.
Yep.
They all remember we had the building, they utilize the good weather.
Yeah.
Not so much after cars, but it's an option for daytime meetings.
Yep.
How long is the public is able to be there?
Right, absolutely.
I know, I was wondering even at the beginning of this meeting when we had the first vote, it was like Tishman eye. It's like, do we have to say that?
Well, I picked up on it earlier, I goes.
Oh. I don't think we have to say that. I think we just say aye.
Yeah, yeah, they're all, they're doing a roll call vote and in person when they don't have to, but yeah.
Anyway, let's move on to the line item transfer.
Okay.
Looks like we have two of them.
Yes, you do. One for cemetery commission expenses for a hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents coming from assistant accountant, accountant wages. And the other for conservation commission expenses to take down those three trees that were in Manhand Meadow Sanctuary that were deemed at risk to the abutter's property for five thousand dollars, also coming from the assistant accountant wages.
Have a motion to approve these transfers?
Still moved.
I'll second. Kristen and Francine, any discussion? All in favor? Tishman eye. Aye. Those pictures, by the way, of those trees coming down were pretty.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, seriously, there was one of them that was seriously rotted inside. It needed to come down, absolutely, so.
Great.
Very good that they were able to fit us into the schedule and get it done so quickly as well.
Okay, we have a few more agenda items. Are you okay with us moving along? Yeah, we'll go quickly. The revenue expense, we have the updated expense through six-ten. And do we have revenue on this one? No, just expense. So what comments, questions people have about it?
I just have two. One, Ed and I talked about it earlier today, it's, at some point, this is just, this whole gas and electric and the cow power thing is just
Yeah.
confusing beyond belief. Looking at the bill today, it's like, you know, I, I understand what we're doing in terms of being able to get a credit for, for this in charge of the various buildings around town that are using this, this facility here. But boy, it's not an easy process to keep track of the credits we're getting for using the cow power and then subtracting it from the ever-source bills for everybody. So that's why that one on gas and electric town hall shows overspent.
Yeah.
But it's just because it's got to be re-appportioned.
Re-allocated, correctly.
Back around to where it belongs.
Is this the first year we're doing it this way?
No.
No?
I mean, it's the, it's technically the first year that the cow power is in addition to the net metering credits, but.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, once we get to the net number, looking at next year's budget allocations for this category across the building, we get a little, across all the different buildings, we get more realistic number.
Yeah, trying to get a better sense.
If we knew what it was, the cost.
But isn't it managed differently now? Wasn't it from H C O G before? Or is it?
Uh, yeah, I believe that they were both programs that came from, that came out of H C O G.
Yeah.
That have now gone elsewhere.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and then I.
Hampshire County of Governments, I should say.
And then I know, just as, I know some people haven't thought that we needed the, the income reports and stuff, but I think they, I know Concom's perspective is that they do want them because they have so many different accounts that they need to be sure that they're allocating their, or reconciling their expenses to the right accounts. And so I know Art had asked for some information, which Regina provided today. So I know that they're going to be working on reconciling just the Concom accounts. And I know at one point, community preservation was having some issues at some point too. So that maybe some of these that have got, you know, monies to spend, they need to take a look at their own little accounts, not just the, the general fund, but.
And the department heads are, I mean, they're able to move between lines or does it have to come to here?
It has to go to both the finance committee and, and the select board for approval, yes.
That word's out, right?
What's that?
That's going to happen sooner rather than later, okay.
That's part of what you.
All of this, yeah.
Just approved earlier, yes.
Okay, but all of them would do that? Because I know that they talked about possibly taking the money from the Sharps to cover the expenses in the board of health.
Correct.
Okay. And then the street lighting, did you ever find out whether or not they were actually ever reduced?
It seems like they were not, so.
Okay, so they'll have to be covered there.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, I've got a letter to go out and I just got to get to it.
All right. And the deadline on that is what, how long after the beginning of the fiscal year, a month or?
No, it's, I think, the tenth. I'll check, but I believe it's July tenth.
Yeah, that, we definitely got to get going on that then. Any other questions about the expense line? It all looks, I mean, as usual, everybody does a great job.
The, the only one then that was brought up last night with the finance committee was the, the police outside detail and the fact that it's almost sixty thousand dollars in.
Over.
Kind in collections at some page nine. But Ed explained that it's probably a timing thing.
Yeah, I mean, that's frequently, depending on the vendor, can be a couple of months to three months from the time of sending the bills out. So right now, the bills have been entered and posted through March. So there's still some work to do on April and May.
A lot more to come with all the work that's going on now.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. I just had one other question in terms of where we stand with the audit. We've spent some money on that, but there's still a chunk of money to spend. And I didn't know how far along we are with the audit. Is it finished or?
Most of it comes right at the end and I just, I just made arrangements to get the auditing firm some remote access to information here so they can finish it up.
Do they need to finish it during this month or is there a?
They don't have to, I mean, the sooner the better, obviously, but.
I didn't know if there was a deadline for when audits needed to get done, usually.
Is that typical, that Melonson would be able to get remote access into?
They could come in now, right?
Well, it makes, it makes, it makes it easier for them. Yeah, it's the same type, same type of thing that if we ended up with a CPA firm as a
Right.
vendor for a town accountant, it would be the same type of.
But they haven't had it up till now?
Huh?
They've just done everything over here?
Yeah.
I'm surprised.
Correct.
I'm surprised. Okay, we just have a few more things here. M V P update, is everybody good with the expense report? M V P update, you sent the thing out today, there needs to be a public.
Public listening session and, and of course, it kind of went by me at first, but the two dates that Fuss and O'Neil had that they were suggesting were the twenty-second and the twenty-fourth. And it completely went over my head, the twenty-second's the election, so the Thursday, the twenty-fourth would be obviously the preferred date for that listening session, so.
I saw that email today, what time is that on the twenty-fourth?
You can either do six to seven or seven to eight. And I should actually put that in the email, so let me know what your preference is for time.
Are there meetings that night?
Yeah, there, there's the P Q B is at six o'clock that night on the twenty-fourth.
And this is after the election too, so it's, it'd be a different.
Are we going to, yeah, we'll have to switch over pretty quickly.
Either time is okay for me.
Either time's all right with me.
Do you have a preference?
If you want to.
Later is always better for me. I wouldn't mind seven o'clock, just so I can see a part of it.
Okay.
I don't want to, you know, inconvenience everyone else. I can always, it's, if it's being recorded, I can watch it. So let's go ahead with what works for you folks.
What's the consensus?
Seven to eight.
Seven to eight, okay.
Seven to eight. On the twenty-fourth.
Okay, you got it.
And so there's a listening session and then at some point there'll be a discussion around what project we're going to apply for in terms of vulnerability, climate change in town?
Yes.
Okay, and how, does Fuss and Neil stay with us through this process?
They'll come up with some recommendations and then it'll be up to us to move forward with that process when we actually apply for grants.
Okay. Any questions about the M V P process? Chris, I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind if we handle the fire department business before the master plan presentation, committee report. Unless you wanted to do that before, you're okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just don't want a fire or something to come in and then you have to say sorry. All right, I thought that, so actually we have two items. One is the hearing officer, fire department violations discussion. And then, of course, Chief John Workman's contract to be signed. So if you would talk to us about the first thing, which is the hearing officer, fire department violations and an opportunity with Northampton.
Yeah, so first of all, I never think I'd be saying this, but it's nice to be here in front of everybody. It's amazing.
It's weird.
It is weird, it's hard to get used to. So for hearing officer, the state had some years ago now, probably almost twenty years ago, they had come up with a ticketing book that fire departments could use as a tool to help get compliance with some of the fire code violation. Some of the trouble with it in the legislature when they wrote it, you needed to pay a hearing officer, it was twenty-five hundred dollars, which, you know, it's a good, it's a, it's a good tool to have, but it's not, for me, it's not so much for the revenue that you'll gain from it, but it's the amount of time I save if I have a problem. It takes me a lot of time to take somebody to court, it's hard to do the follow-through. So it's a nice tool, but I don't look at it as a, look at it as a revenue tool. Northampton, what they've started to do, some of the communities around us, as I started to just go to some of the chief's meetings and recognize that communities were banding together to reduce that twenty-five hundred dollar cost. And so Northampton had something for eight hundred dollars where they would provide the hearing officer and we could, we would just pay eight hundred dollars. And if we can get more towns in, that number would be reduced. So that seemed like a good opportunity. It really is a good tool for the department. Like I say, that's not something that I'm looking to gain revenue, especially out of. It's just something that saves me a lot of time with any kind of problem areas and fire, fire code violation. So Northampton had sent over the proposal, which I think you all had gotten. I would recommend, I would take it out of my budget, find someplace to, to pay for it because I think it's that valuable a tool. And recommend that we move forward with that.
So this is, they play the role as the hearing officer, which is a great thing for a small town. And also, not only just because they handle it more objectively, but also, you know, you don't want a
It's a lot of town.
Lot of time, you don't want to go up and, you know, cause problems with neighbors. You want to have somebody objectively doing that. So tell me, in, in the course of a year, would it be an eight hundred dollar charge per year?
Eight hundred dollar charge per year, yeah.
A year?
Yeah.
And they would issue violations or?
No, no, so we would issue the violations. And we, they would actually, the state would issue us a ticket book, so we'd actually write a ticket.
Right.
So in the past, when someone's really been a problem, it, I, I've usually tried to bring in like some of the Department of Conservation, D C R, to have them do some of the legwork legally because it just takes so much time. There's only me full-time over there. So what happens is a lot of people that become problematic until you really get to a point where you really have to do something.
Right.
This would sort of nip that a little bit. And it's not me, Jeremy, it might be fifty dollars a year.
Can you give an example of a couple of violations?
Burning is probably a big one.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're a small enough community that it's not so much of like, I mean, I have had some issue, and I hate to name names because I'm not looking to pick on anybody, larger buildings that haven't been up on like sprinkler stuff when they've, when different people have moved out of them. And then I go in, I see that they're six, eight months out of compliance.
Right.
And so at that point there, it's, you know, I'm writing letters, I'm following through. Once you get through to the right person, and then I go back, you know, a year and a half later and I'm doing the same thing over again.
Right, right.
It's, you know, it's kind of a, I believe in the carrot more than I believe in the stick. But sometimes it's, it's appropriate. So it's those type of violations. And like I say, I do believe in the carrot more than the stick. So we try and make, you know, burning permits and all that more accessible. I try and, you know, be accommodating to people. I think you get, we get farther with that. But with the reduced costs and the potential to save time and just give another tool in the toolbox to really do the job, I think it's a good thing. And I hope to, as it goes forward, I hope to see costs reduced. I would.
So right now it would just be Northampton and Southampton?
Uh, no, it's, I forget all the communities. I want to say Northampton, Hadley.
Yeah.
And there must be another couple in there, but I can't think of.
But it takes it out of your purview to be a punitive one and you can be the carrot and it can be the stick.
It doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, doing fire prevention work, you're not always the good guy. I don't have a problem with that. My thing is public safety, taking care of people, make sure they're safe. So if somebody's really being egregious, I have no problem saying that you need to do this correctly. It does give that person who gets that, it gives them a place to go to outside of, you know, the department. You know, if they think, oh, the chief is being unfair, they can take it outside of the community and really get a third person, which I think is a good thing because.
Yeah, it makes it a neutral thing.
It makes it, it makes it neutral, because, you know, they get a fair review. It makes a lot of sense. And, you know, if we kept it in-house, because I know I'd had some discussion with Ed in the past about taking some of the coursework for it, but then, you know, Master General Law, it's actually a stipulation that we'd have to give him a stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars, which is probably more than I can take out of my budget and not how I allocate it with his contract and everything else. So there's just some challenges going that direction. But this takes it out of the community, really does make a third party. And I do think that that's a good thing.
Yeah, I do too. So you had sent us an original copy, there were just a couple of edits on it. Do we have an updated copy of that?
You should have, I believe, there was a good catch that you had made. I had written back and they apologized, they sent it unupdated for the new fiscal year.
Okay, good.
And should have that. And if you don't, we can figure that out and I'll get it to you guys.
I can, I can take a look and make sure that what I have on record is the most updated one.
Yeah, easy enough.
Okay. Do we need to vote on supporting that? Okay, someone make a motion to support the hearing op, joining with the other communities leads, Northampton on the hearing officer for the fire department?
So move.
I'll second it. Francine and then Chris, any other discussion, questions, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. And we also have come to agreement on Chief John Workman's contract. So before I talk about that specifically, I just want to say thank you to you and to your department. This certainly affected your department as much as, or more than just about anybody else. You are transporting people with COVID, you were in the front lines very much. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much for you and your department for all you did for this community. It's been about a year.
Pass that right along to the crew. I mean, I think the crew really did a tremendous job stepping up. You know, it gets tough when, you know, whether it be a nine-eleven incident and, you know, the family gets concerned for your safety or this kind of pandemic and the guys are, men and women are stepping up and, and, you know, getting on the bus and transporting people that are, you know, oozing at the seams. But it's work that needs to be done. I think that everybody gets into this business to help people. I'm real proud of the group, so I'll pass it along and I appreciate it.
Yeah, please do, yeah. And I mentioned at the beginning, before you came about, we had a meeting today and we're meeting every two weeks and talking about P P E and, you know, the cleaning supplies and the.
It's been a long year.
Fogger. It's been a long year of going through all of the. It's been a long year of going through all of the trials and tribulations of this, and are we in the red or are we in the gray? And then sadly, you know, the community members that died because of this pandemic, and, I mean, everybody's been affected by it, but certainly you were right on the front lines there. So, we have two copies of this, or at least I do, is it the draft one?
I've got the originals that will need to be approved and signed.
Okay, okay. All right, so thank you very much, you have come to an agreement on the contract, and this is a contract that's between the South, Town of Southampton and Chief Workman. And this runs, this is actually retroactive, so his contract expired of, in, um-
June thirty, twenty twenty.
Huh?
June thirty, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, so, uh, yeah, so, so glad to be passing this along, so this is actually, the term of the contract then is a three-year, three-year contract? So July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-three, unless either party provides written notice to the other of its intention to renegotiate. I'm gonna be summarizing this, okay? I think we're in agreement with this, and you'll be getting it. So it goes through the different duties, effective, so it's also EMS as well as EMD. Hours are as department heads, basically always. That's what department heads usually have. Compensation is ninety thousand dollars for this year, fire chief, EMS director for the period, July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-one. And then the additional duties will be added so that for the next fiscal year that we're coming upon, it'd be ninety-nine, six hundred. And then July, wait a minute, twenty-two through twenty-three would be one oh one, five nine two. There's a travel reimbursement, there's uniform reimbursement, there are personal days and vacation days, professional development, use of a vehicle, general expenses, indemnification. Our resignation is ninety days on either end, if you terminate ninety-day notice and same on our end. Our residency requirement has been in place since July one, twenty seventeen. And this agreement contains the entire agreement between the parties with respect to the subject matter hereon. And any notices relative to this agreement is agreed to be sent to the town administrator in certified mail. And no reduction in benefits, retroactive pay goes back through July one, twenty twenty. And then there is a COVID relief clause add to this, that if funds become available through additional means, state, federal government, that there'd be allow, there'd be the opportunity to seek additional funding to cover additional COVID-related expenses. So would anybody else from the select board like to add anything for this contract?
No, this is pretty comprehensive as we discussed.
Yep, and we met several times and we're really happy to have come to agreement on this, and so I guess I'll have a-
And you will have to vote on this in the open session.
Yeah.
And then-
I was just about to say, I was just about to say, could I have a motion then to approve this contract?
I move to approve the contract between Fire Chief John Workman and the Town of Southampton. Effective July one, twenty, twenty-two, June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Further comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Wonderful, thank you very much, and we're very happy that you'll be staying with us for several years, a couple more years.
I do appreciate your support.
And like I mentioned before, I really think that soon after we get past the new fiscal year and all of the busyness of what's happening with the election and the town meeting, we're going to reconvene the Public Safety Complex Committee. I mean, there's been a hiatus and I think it's time that we redo that, so I'm hoping that that can be set up for July.
Great, I'll be in.
Okay, I think we need to, we need to keep moving on that. So if you would be kind enough to sign, we'll have you sign this.
There's three of them that y'all have to sign.
Yep, I wanna have him sign.
Dear Randall.
It's gotta be signed by the town accountants too, so, they're not official yet. I, I would tell you, you could, you could eventually have one, but that's why there's three of them. Yeah.
Very much, wonderful, thank you for everything.
I think so, I think it is.
Thank you so much for coming, John, appreciate it.
Very much for coming.
Let me just make sure that everybody-
John, just take a look at the spreadsheet I sent you today on your, your stuff. So, there may be some things that, yeah, 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 just holler at me, we'll, we'll find some time.
Did you get them all?
Yep.
Bye-bye. Bye, John, chief. There you go.
Thank you.
I think, oh, are there that many? Oh, I see, these are, are these previous, are these line items?
Yes, I hadn't had you sign, sign them, so the number ones were previous, that's why I got the-
Okay, all right, I'll get, I'll get to that.
But the ones on, ones on top and the number twos, that's tonight's.
Yep, I'll take care of those, we'll just keep moving here.
And I've gotta chase finance down for-
Okay, the next is a letter from Town Administrator Gibson asking to carry over forty hours of vacation from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two per his contract. Could I have a motion to approve the carryover?
I'll move. I'll second.
Any further questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, now that this is voted on and approved and signed, one of the conditions, new conditions of this contract is that the fire chief may carry over up to one week, five days, forty hours at the approval of the select board, so John did send me an email asking for approval to carry over the one week, five days, forty hours from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two, if you would please consider taking that up.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
All right, so move to allow the forty hours, five days carryover for the fire chief's vacation leave.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. As we've said in the past, make sure people use up their vacation time, everybody works hard, and certainly the contracts allow for a week, but we don't want people having to give up that, that's hard-earned vacation time.
And thank you very much for allowing me to carry over the forty hours, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, you deserve it, Ed. Yep, you worked very hard, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome, I had a hundred hours left between letting you carry over forty and the vacation time, you're letting me take the end of this week to the end of the next week, I'll take a good chunk out of it.
Oh, that's good. A lot of people have been taking the time these last few weeks, so that's good. Okay, any other business, I can't wait until the next regular meeting, June twenty-ninth. I have the one thing I wanted to mention, I did talk to John Mayer today, not the famous musician. It was a customer service representative from Charter Spectrum. And I left him a message this morning, he called me right back, we played a little bit of a phone tag. But I did let him know that there were a lot of complaints in time, town about the internet service, that there were a lot of people that were pretty unhappy and that our master plan, which we're coming back to, identified communications and internet as number two priority in town, and it was very well, you know, we had a high survey rate. So first time he had really like heard that there was a, you know, a problem, somewhat surprised. He said that the capabilities that they have, that they have fiber right up into, into every neighborhood, it's only coaxial cable the rest of the way. He said that people now have had cable for, you know, dozens of years and that people should contact customer service if they have any internet issues whatsoever because they have the capability, not that dissimilar from fiber. And he felt strongly that between the cable box and the modem and the wiring, which is some people have, you know, by hand into the cable box, he said that there's a good chance a lot of people really need to have their own individual setup checked out. And he strongly encouraged everybody that has an issue to contact customer service directly and find out. And he said there's also a business rate, because I mentioned about a couple of people that were doing business at home, and he mentioned that there's, they have a business rate with a much higher-
Faster speed.
Faster speed, and that he encourages any business in town to look into that. So I think we'll just pass that message along for now and see what happens.
So the cost when they call and, you know, have their system in their home, let's say evaluated, if they think that might be the cause, is there a cost associated with that?
I think there's only a cost if there's an upgrade to the system.
But they would come and-
Yeah, I just had that done, my modem sort of stopped working and they came in and they replaced it. I also, if you remember in the beginning when we were doing a lot of Zoom meetings, I couldn't, I was having a lot of difficulty with seeing the rest of the people in the meeting and stuff, I ended, I did upgrade and I've never had a problem since. So if, there may be circumstances where I think that it's gonna be more money, but there are other times when they will evaluate the problem and potentially fix a wire or fix a cable or something. So that's what they told me, they don't want any unhappy customers, is what he said, and he encouraged anybody to reach out.
So there's essentially places in town where they are doing fiber, not just-
He said that the fiber extends to every neighborhood in Southampton and it's, it's only into the home that becomes coaxial, and he felt that he, that they have, you know, he says, everybody wants fiber, but I can tell you right now, we have the same capability and speed. So that's what I heard from John Mayer. And if anybody wants specifically, I'm happy to share his contact information, but let's encourage, is anybody else that writes to consider reaching out to the customer service.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let's backtrack then and talk about the MVP, Master Plan Committee Report.
Yeah, I guess we could probably do this at a, you know, a lengthier meeting, you know, lengthier presentation, but what I wanted to say was that we have actually finalized the, the update reports. We've had a, over a year, I guess, basically of, of doing, as you well know, the community survey and all the, all the information and stuff that was gathered there, pulled together that report, and our PVPC consultant gave us the, the final draft, which Master Plan Committee has gone through and, and made some additions and edits and have finally approved it. So what we have is actually a two-volume report. There is the core report, which is about a twenty-five to thirty-page report, which we wanted something simple and manageable that anybody could pick up and any committee, any board that's involved could pick it up and use it as a, as a working document. So basically that, that document is organized by chapter. So there was, for example, a chapter on housing or on economic development or open space. All of those have the short-term goals listed as from the original master plan many years ago. And then at the end of that little section for each category, I will, or chapter, he, the consultant has given us some ideas of how we could move forward on some of these, some of these strategies. There might be grants to pursue, there might be other ways to tackle the problem. So the, the main report is organized such that it should be a working document for any kind of future committee that we're gonna pull together to really try and do some, some implementation of the, of the master plan. So the bulk of it is organized again by chapter, but very clearly just the short-term goals with some recommendations. And then at the very end of that is a listing of all of the goals and strategies that have already been achieved since the original master plan was put together. So there's about twenty, twenty-five, I think, that have actually been, been achieved, and so those are all listed right there. The second volume, per se, is actually, I'd really call it an appendix, and that actually, again, chapter by chapter, lists out the long-term goals. So those may be, you know, ten years down the line, but frankly, we're almost into the ten-year framework since the original master plan came out. So there may be some that are, even though they are listed as medium to long-term, there may be ones that committees wanna advance and, and start working on now because for whatever reason, they may be more appropriate to work on right now, they've got the, you know, the bandwidth to do it, or there might be an opportunity for a grant to address something or whatever it might be. So the committees could also refer to that, but that's essentially carving out the long-term goals and then it does have the actual survey that we did last summer in it. So that really serves as the appendage to the main reports. The main report was intended to be something that's more user-friendly, that however we're gonna move forward in the future now to try and take some serious action on the community priorities. As you said, I mean, we know that the, the Greenway Bike Path came up as a first priority, the broadband was a high priority, the solar on town, used property, town-owned properties was an idea. There was more support for open space, there were issues around housing and around the public safety complex. So all of those, I think, are the main, main items that we need to try and figure out how we're gonna tackle going forward. And I think where we are at, at the master plan committee level, we are six members big right now. We have spaces for one person on parks, we have an empty slot from the Parks Department, but I will be mentioning that to them when I go to them tomorrow night, and we have a couple of at-large citizen seats that are available for that. We've kinda hesitated to recruit any more members because we weren't totally sure what our role is gonna be going forward in terms of sort of shepherding, you know, some level of action and whether, how a master plan kinda defines itself to help move the next steps of the master plan. Because really, the planning board is implicated in many, many of these things.
Right.
So the select board is too. Select board, definitely. Concom sum, but not so much, heavy on, heavy on planning board in particular, depending on the chapters. So, you know, we, we just weren't sure whether we wanted to have a mini committee, you know, some sort of an action committee.
Management committee.
Management committee to try and move things forward and say, okay, here's where our priorities are, what are we really gonna try and tackle as our first priority? I mean, as you know, we've already applied for a grant on the Greenway, we've, you know, gotten some money on that, we've got the, you know, the debt exclusion that we voted on the other day, should that pass at, at the ballot box, so we're, we're making some progress on it. But, you know, broadband would be probably the next huge item, along with anything for renewable energies and, you know, housing and public safety complex. The Housing Authority, though, is with their grant from DNTA, they're moving forward on updating their housing production plan.
Oh, good.
So that is the real focus that they're gonna be doing. So they're, they're taking steps kind of, you know, parallel to, to the master plan in terms of updating their own housing plan, which definitely needed to be done.
But it was also very helpful that the chair of the Housing Committee was also on the master plan.
He was also on the master plan, exactly.
And so that helped coordinate things.
So I mean, the, how, the Master Plan Committee has members from various committees, so we have somebody from planning, from housing, from Concom, from historical, Parks is empty right now and I'm missing somebody, who am I missing?
No.
Hello, well, anyway. But basically, master plan was drawn from the various committees, so we could have this level of, of-
Finance?
Uh, no, actually finance or capital's not on there. So that we could have this level of, of collaboration and cooperation going forward. But we're just, you know, kind of wondering, I think it probably needs to be a, a select board decision as to how to, how to move forward at some point in time. I'm not sure that I have any, any great recommendations at this point, except some other subcommittee to try and kickstart something going on further. You know, none of us would be the, the subject experts necessarily, but if we can help be the ones to help organize and, and, you know, sort of-
And coordinate.
Coordinate meetings or whatever it might be to, you know, whether it's a monthly meeting or something like that of some master plan action group, I don't know, I don't know what it could be, but we need to kind of think about that a little bit more perhaps. But I think we have at least a document we can work from and say, okay, where do we wanna go from here? But I think it would be good if we could narrow down, you know, and give ourselves a couple of priorities for the coming fiscal year, saying these are the ones that we're really gonna push forward heavy on and see what we can do, two or three at the most, I would say, out of the, out of the bunch. So that's kind of it. So, that's kind of it. We will be putting it up on the, on the town website. It'll be on, on the master plan page on the, on the town website. So, we'll get that up so people can have a look at it and go through it. And I'll certainly get it back around to all of you as well.
Can it be featured a little bit more than on the master plan thing?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
The school committee was the other one missing.
Oh, was it? Okay.
On.
Okay.
Well, what, what I think is wonderful is that, first of all, it was a great job and did a lot of meetings last year. I mean, really pulled that together between the surveys, so wonderful job. It's referenced a lot. It's referenced, it's referenced the town meeting, it's referenced a lot, the surveys referenced a lot, so. And I think similar to the open space plan too, I just feel like when I read through, it's like, yeah, that's ongoing or yes, that's, you know, I think that there's, it's a living document, which, you know, people always say, well, you know, you put all this work and then it becomes, you know, a goat gets, collects dust on a shelf.
Right.
And I really feel that both of those have a lot of very pertinent things that are happening. So, thank you.
Yeah, no, you're welcome.
I don't think, I don't feel like it's boilerplate.
Right, right.
I thought the original document was a boilerplate that Southampton got, you know.
Right.
Not to make any disparaging remarks, but that's what it was.
Yeah.
This is really originally written, customized for Southampton, I think. Yeah, I think it did a nice job.
Yeah, I do too. So, thank you too, Francine, and the whole committee.
Chris.
So, I think, you know, maybe we just can, you know, I'll, I'll be sure that, you know, you all have it and then maybe we need to just, you know, think about it as we start a new fiscal year here, what, how we want to really kind of organize it and really, I, I don't want to let it sit. I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of work put into it and it, it really should be something that can be actionable. That was the intent of having this, this whole grant in the first place, was not to just create another pretty report, but we wanted really an action plan. And I think we've got at least the outlines of one, but how to, how to kind of fill in the blanks and make it happen is a little bit tough. I mean, if, if, you know, unlike many towns that have a town planner, you know, that would be the logical person to coordinate all this, right? We don't have that.
Right.
And, you know, when you've got volunteers, you know, it's tough to pull it together.
Yeah, it is.
And it's very easy to let something, I think, fall off the cliff again and, and so I don't want to really lose that momentum, but we just have to figure out the best way to tackle it.
Yeah, I agree.
And quite honestly, I think citizens sometimes are frustrated by that. But when you think about the fact that most of this work is done by volunteers and those committees and the membership changes from one year to the next.
Right, yeah.
That's really the explanation of why things move as slowly as they do. It's, it's not anybody's motivation or lack thereof. You lose a lot of history.
That's true, that's true, yeah. So, anyway, so we'll, we'll probably just bring it back again, you know, later next month or sometime and just sort of see if we can have a better strategy. But I just wanted to let you know where it stood and, and that we really do have something, I think, can be a, can be a good working document for the various committees that are named in there. So, in many of these strategies, there's two or three different committees or boards that are in charge of pulling it together. And the way they're listed is the, the first one on the list is the, the lead of the, the proposed lead anyway of the, the strategy. So, unfortunately, like I say, a lot of it falls on planning board. So, if we can get a part-time town planner, could we borrow one somewhere? Bad chance, right? I need to write another grant, as I can hear it right now.
Yeah, we've basically maxed out everything, so.
I think so, I know.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. We have no PCFs or PRFs, but we do have a, a permit, Mary Rysen.
Ryzen?
Ryzen. One-day wine and malt, Conant Park, July third, three, two P M to eight-thirty P M, a graduation party. All the paperwork together, Ed?
Yes, it is.
Need to motion on that or?
We do.
I move to approve the one-day wine and malt permit for Conant Park for July third, for Mary Ryzen, for a graduation party from two P M to eight-thirty P M.
I'll second that. All right, yeah, where's the page that it actually has the amount paid?
It's here, I think I have it.
This one? Is that the one that received?
Fifty?
Okay. Is that, isn't there the, the out-of-town rate? Is that the out-of-town rate?
Yeah, it's out of town, one-seventy-five plus the fifty-dollar security.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Great. Next then, we have warrants, quite a few of them.
Yes, we do.
And there is one that's missing, the PD twenty-one forty-eight.
Okay, that's not in the package?
It's not in the package.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay. I was just looking for that, okay. So, I'm, I'll read them off the agenda, it's easier. Okay, several warrants. Okay, we have a vendor payable warrant, W twenty-one forty-seven, in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Payroll deduction warrant with retirement, PD twenty-one forty-eight A, in the amount of a hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. A payroll deduction warrant, PD twenty-one forty-eight, in the amount of forty-five, eight-seventy-five and seventy-five cents. Another vendor payable warrant, W twenty-one forty-nine B, in the amount of one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and thirty cents. A venerable, vendor payable warrant, W twenty-one forty-nine, this is the main warrant, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents. A vendor payable warrant, W twenty-one forty-nine A, for three-hundred dollars. A payroll warrant, P twenty-one fifty, in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and forty-one cents. And lastly, the payroll reduction warrant to accompany that, PD twenty-one fifty, in the amount of forty-seven-thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars and forty-two cents.
That's it. Okay, any questions about the warrants? Okay, thank you, Chris. We don't have any documents that I'm aware of for signature, do we, Ed? You have the ones from the rental of the park, right? Is the original here for signature or no?
For which one?
The, the Conant Park, oh, thank you very much.
The license, yes, right there.
There we are. Anything else, just for signature?
No.
Minutes to approve, there's one set of minutes on May fourth. Yeah, everybody get a chance to look at those?
I, I don't have corrections to it, I just have a question. We list the people whose wages were to go up to thirteen-fifty. That happened?
Um, I think we signed the P.
C F's on them. Yeah, I'm saying, did, did it actually?
Oh, did that happen?
Did it happen, yes, did they?
There was a few stragglers in your original motion, was that they all had to be approved and also the department heads had to calculate the retro and make sure it was in their budget. So, the last straggler came in, so now we will send those along so that they are.
All done at once?
Yeah, taken care of in the next payroll.
Okay, and these were all retroactive, right, to?
Correct, January first, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I saw anything in particular. This was the joint meeting with finance, right?
Yep. I think it was the fir, one of the first looks at the, all the warrants, I mean, the out, all the articles.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Uh, if everyone's good with it, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of May fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Mm-hmm, um, yeah, I'll second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, any pending items?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any further communication with the Beagle Club?
No, I, actually, what I have to do is track down of what surveying company that we had ended up using for that and I've got to get them to see what it would cost to go out there and mark that section of fence. I originally, I originally thought it was one and then I checked and it was not them, so I got to go back and check the invoices to see who it was.
Okay, perhaps after we get to pass the election and all of the busyness of this month, we can pick up on some of the other things in the early summer there. What about the annual report?
I meant to bring you your copies, it's out, it's on the website.
Okay, good.
Remind me before.
Are they in the office there? Yeah, you have them in the office?
Yes, and then Lucy's got a box of them in the town.
Okay, good, great. And just a reminder to people that they were dedicated this year to John Martin, who was certainly on a lot of committees and very deserving.
We mailed him a copy, I hope.
Uh, I didn't mail him one yet, he act, I actually, he stopped in last week when I was preparing for the ATM and he actually offered to take me to lunch. I said, I don't have time, but he asked to save him a couple of copies of it. So, I will, I will mail him two copies.
Good, nice, good. So, calendar, most importantly, please be sure you vote next Tuesday, June twenty-second. The polls are open here from twelve to eight. And there's a couple of, well, there's obviously the election for the positions in town, but also the follow-up to the annual town meeting about the debt exclusion and override. So, please be sure you participate. And also, the next Select Board meeting will be in the twenty-ninth. I will not be able to make it, so hopefully this will be a possibly, well, reconvene board. So, I'll just leave it up to you or Ed Merrily, depending on the outcome of the election, to convene the group, okay?
All right.
And now it's open time for the public. The Select Board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation as follows. You're good, Robert? Thanks for sticking with us.
Where's Tammy?
Yeah, any correspondence?
No.
Nope. No executive session, so at this point, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to miss the roll call. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much for coming and for everything. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, Robert, take care.